Okay, we are ready.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Brunswick County May Board Meeting, Brunswick County Schools. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. And before we move forward, I would like to say a word of appreciation to our teachers as this is Teacher Appreciation Week. I'd like to thank all of our teachers for their continued service to the students of Brunswick County Schools. I'm so grateful to each one of you, and I know the challenges that you face every day to meet the needs of our students, especially since our normal routines were interrupted by COVID-19 in March. Thank you all for being the glue that holds us together as we make learning happen all across our county, not just in a classroom. Dr. Seuss would be so proud of you to know that you will teach here, you will teach there, you will teach anywhere, and we know that is true. You have proven that. Thank you all for everything you do every day. Now, at this time, I will open up for public address.
All right, and we're going to have our first, we have four students speaking. The first is going to be via telephone. This is Kayla Roman from South Brunswick High School. Kayla, you there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you've got, you've got three minutes for the, for the public speaking.
Okay, thank you. Please accept from Kayla Roman on my behalf the submission to the board my written statement. Good morning, Board. My name is Kayla Roman, and I'm a senior enrolled at South Brunswick High School. Earning a high school diploma is a huge milestone, not only in my life, but as well as my family's. I'm a first-generation high school graduate who not only excelled in school with a 3.6 GPA, but was also involved in my community in tremendous ways. I was dual-enrolled at Brunswick Community College, studying special education and criminal justice. I've worked a part-time job, and I was a JROTC cadet for quite some time. I finished the semester early this year. However, I opted out of the December graduation because I would like to walk with my fellow classmates. First and foremost, a graduation ceremony is a way for us to recognize and thank everyone who supported us through our years. Our prom, senior picnic, senior walk, all have been canceled due to this pandemic, but why should graduation be canceled as well? For years, this ceremony has become a public rite of passage. Not only am I upset with the circumstances, but I feel robbed. Seniors have worked extremely hard, and we've looked forward to having our senior amenities for years. As a senior myself, I feel like having a proper graduation ceremony at a later date with all of our family and friends will be the most memorable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kayla.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day.
Bailey, you ready? It's on Elizabeth, good luck. So she's wrapping up now. Okay, come on up here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Board members, we have Bailey Smith, student at North Brunswick High School. Bailey, you have three minutes.
All right, well, first off, good morning. I hope everyone is well. My name is Bailey Smith, and I am the valedictorian of the Class of 2020 at North Brunswick High School. So today, my main question is, why can graduation not wait until later on? I do not disagree with the virtual option. I think it's very resourceful and would be a great Plan B. However, I do not think it should be Plan A. I think my biggest fear is that we do not at least try to wait to give seniors, you know, the moment that we've worked for, for 15, 16, 17 years. I know personally, for me, I strive very, very hard every single day I've been in school, and I know my class would agree as well. It's, it really is a life milestone. It's sort of the next chapter for us all, and I think the biggest failure we could do is just not even trying to wait when it affects so many people. Universities such as UNCW have decided that they're going to push back and postpone and just see how things roll out. So, once again, my main question is, what is the rush? Is there a rush, really? The Class of 2020 is being deprived of a very, very important moment for us all, and I completely understand the circumstances, but why not wait? And if all else fails, resort to the virtual ceremony. And then, I guess, the second big thing for me is, how many people are the seniors allowed to bring to witness the graduation? For me, family plays a vital role in my success, and I'm pretty sure that goes for everyone else as well. Those are the people that have backed you up and supported you this entire journey. And just for my siblings or my grandparents, who may not, you know, be there when, you know, my other four siblings come around to see them graduate, I know how much this would mean to them and how much it means to me. And so that really is a big fear of mine, is that, you know, the people who have loved me and supported me will not be able to get to see, you know, my accomplishments in person. And then, I guess, the other situation that comes to mind is for people whose parents are essential workers. Our graduation is scheduled for Tuesday, May 26th. So what about the kids who rely on their parents for transportation? Are buses going to be provided for them? And then, I honestly feel like I represent my class, and to feel that some students may not even be able to go because they have no means of transportation is a great fear of mine, because I think everyone should get a chance to walk across that stage. As an online student at the North Carolina School of Science and Math, we were sent a survey. We got to pick and to include our opinion in what we want to see happen, and I think that's the most important thing when it comes to hard times, to struggles, is to all come together and include the public's opinion. So to rush into it and not even consider others is my biggest fear. So please do not rush the Class of 2020 out. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You have three minutes.
First, I'd like to...
Hold on one second. Board members, I have, I have Dean Peabody from West Brunswick High School.
Okay, first, I'd like to submit comments from Kayla Roman's entrance records. When they're finished, grab the envelope. Good morning. I'd like to submit to this board my written statement in its entirety to be included in the record and minutes of this meeting. Over the past few days, I have become very confused over this graduation decision. It is very peculiar that not only is it happening nearly two weeks prior to our previously scheduled graduation with no students, especially the students in student government, or ask their opinion to help craft a solution. After talking with the representative of the Brunswick Beacon, I learned that the Beacon typically has someone in attendance during each decision to report on the outcomes of the school board meetings and decisions. Why were they not even notified of this graduation decision? That is very confusing to me. Furthermore, I assume there is a contract with ATMC for this current graduation plan. How much is this costing? Why have we not seen the details of this plan? Has the graduation already been paid for? Have you asked ATMC if they will allow you to break the contract without penalty? Surely, ATMC wants to be flexible considering the unprecedented nature of event planning, given the coronavirus. Since it says taxpayer money that is paying for this contract, we would like to see the contract and know who devised and agreed to this plan and contract. The only solution we have been offered is a passive graduation. This doesn't truly represent the last 12 years of hard work, dedication, laughs, and tears that each of us has gone through. How can we feel any sense of accomplishment or camaraderie when the only option we have to graduate is to walk with the people who share the first letter of our last name and see 90% of our senior class walk on a video that we wouldn't see until two weeks after I was handed my diploma? There is still time to change this. There is still time to create a coalition of students and teachers and administrators to plan a meaningful graduation. We still have the opportunity to have an in-person graduation this summer while still adhering to the State Board of Education's May 1st guidelines. More importantly, why have we not already taken the steps to do such things? This is not just a social media stunt. It is about acting as a senior class, as a family, as a group of kids whose lives have been changed in the most unforeseen ways and who have been affected, not only because of COVID-19, but because of the decisions of the people who haven't genuinely valued this important senior right. Thank you for reconsidering your decision, for being transparent, or that the community expects by giving us the who and the what and the why's of your decision-making, and for not letting down the Brunswick County Committee and the graduating class of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members, I have Keon Baringi from West Brunswick High School. Keon, you have three minutes.
All right, how are y'all today?
Good morning.
Good morning. A few days ago, I started a petition. I'm not sure if y'all have seen it yet. I have a list of the signatures. This is 968 right now. As of this morning, there is 1,068 supporters who have signed along with 6,312 views. I'll go ahead and set the signatures right here for y'all. May I have permission to read the petition to y'all? All right. Seniors have spent the past 12 years of their lives for the moment to experience graduation as the send-off to adulthood. While it is understandable for Brunswick County Schools to take precautions to ensure everyone's safety, what is the need to rush graduation? There is still a chance to be able to hold graduation later with the opportunity for everyone to at least celebrate together. It has been evident over the past few months that COVID-19 has made life harder for everyone. No one knows where this pandemic will take us the next few months, but I know as a West Brunswick senior and American citizen, it is my duty to speak for my peers and let Brunswick County Schools know how we, as students, feel about the current graduation plan. Even if a normal graduation ceremony is not feasible later, there is still time to come up with a ceremony plan that allows everyone to be together while maintaining social distance. It does not seem like watching a video stream of our graduation one to two weeks after receiving our diplomas is a send-off that the Class of 2020 deserves. How can the graduating class feel like we have received the true send-off? I'm asking you guys, Brunswick County Schools, to reconsider two things: to move graduation to a later date, and for the graduation ceremonies to include ideas offered by Brunswick County's graduating seniors. I understand that this is a time of, that time is short, but there are several ways that the families and students of the Class of 2020 can submit their ideas. I'm asking you guys to maybe send a survey to teacher or student email accounts throughout the county, post a link on the district website for interested parties to submit their ideas, or utilize district social media to conduct a poll. I know, I appreciate you guys putting the effort and time to try and come up with something, but I'm just asking y'all to just be a little open, you know, see if there's maybe other possibilities that we can explore to make all sides happy and come up with a good graduation ceremony in the end. I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, we will move on to our parliamentary procedures, and I would like to have a motion to approve our meeting agenda at this time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Are we going to discuss the graduation at all? Can I add that under discussion in number three?
Yes, that will be fine.
Have a motion in a second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We will add that item as discussion number three, graduation. Thank you, Mr. Miller. The next on the list is approval of minutes. We have minutes from March 3rd, our regular, excuse me, March 5th, our regular meeting, March 20th, our emergency call meeting, and March 31st, our budget work session. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? They moved. Okay, Ms. Cook, do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will accept both minutes from the date as read. At this time, we have discussion announcements by superintendent and board members. So, Dr. Oakes, if you'll begin with number one.
Before we go to number one, I too, Madam Chair, would like to express my appreciation for the teachers during the Teacher Appreciation Week. As I said throughout this entire ordeal and prior, our teachers do a fabulous job of making sure our students receive their instruction, and just taking this week to appreciate them just, to me, is a drop in the bucket, is what we really, what they really deserve. So our hats off to all of our teaching staff. You may have heard or seen that the legislator has, legislation has put out a COVID-19 relief package. Some of that information is, we were working through that yesterday. We had our cabinet meeting, and a lot of it pertains to various areas in our organization, from calendars to infrastructure with internet, child nutrition, all of those different areas. You should have received the COVID-19 relief package summary, and as I said, we will be going through that and present to you soon some drafts, particularly with calendar, and how we will utilize the funds that are coming from the legislature. We met with, virtually, we met with our elementary principals, well, actually, all of our principals last week, and started devising plans for student pickup for their belongings that are in their lockers or in their desks. Individual schools are doing that, so we wanted to make sure that you were aware that if you were to hear anyone going out to the school, it's not for any meetings, that type of thing, but for students to pick up their belongings. And also, we're looking to devise a situation where teachers can come back to their classrooms also, get their classrooms organized for summer cleaning, as they typically would. So all of those plans are in the works, and we will get that information to you as well. As you can see, on the agenda for number one, the committee meetings for May 19th, this will be primarily dealing with budget and some of the operational, operation items that Ms. Rutledge will be, will be bringing. And of course, our next regular board meeting on June 2nd, which we would hope we would be able to do face-to-face, but we will see how that turns out, the closer we get to that particular date. Now, we're at number three. Mr. Miller?
First of all, I want to say that I'm very appreciative to ATMC. I'm appreciative of Dr. Oakes and his staff for trying to come up with a plan to deal with the graduations. You know, we've been dealt a hand that we've never been dealt before. So hats off to you and your staff for trying to do something special for these, these graduates. But you know, I've listened to these kids, and I've, I've listened to them for weeks, and I'm friends with a lot of these kids, as well as I know you are too. You know, what's, what's it going to hurt if we do wait it out a little while longer? You know, we don't know what in the month of June is going to bring. Things could be lessened to where we could do something for all of them. You know, if we wanted to wait it out, and the ones that, you know, there's, there's an argument about military, and God knows, I appreciate the ones that are going to our military, but, you know, what could we, could we do virtual for them later if they couldn't attend? Could we wait to July or August, or, you know, even, God forbid, you know, we go through this until next December? I mean, if we had to wait, just wait it out, and let's give them the graduation that they deserve. How does everybody else feel about that? I mean, I don't, I've not talked to any of you. This is just me, but, you know, I just...
Charlie, my, my feeling was to, I agreed. I think we should go forward with virtual graduation for everybody, and then if we can get them in, in the December graduation, allow the 2020 students to walk in the December one, I think that would be ideal. That gives us plenty of time. I mean, Cooper says eight weeks, according to his plan, is the minimum to reopen with any kind of gathering, and that's still going to be limited. But I want to make sure those military kids who might be in Iraq by the time, you know, end of July can still be out of basic and gone. I just want to make sure that they still get some kind of graduation, and I think the virtual thing is a great way to go for everybody, and then if they want to come back in December and walk, let's do it.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying December. I mean, I'm just saying if it was to last that, till that long, you know, we may be able to do something in July or August. I'm just saying we need to wait another, another month and see where we're at, and let's talk about it at our June 2nd meeting and give staff time to kind of look at it again to see where we are and what we can do to, to try to get them a proper graduation.
Ms. Cook? I'm thinking along the lines of what Mr. Benton said. Go ahead with the virtual graduation, then in June, survey the students and see how many would like to have a July graduation, a full graduation in the normal. So we don't know what kind of information we will get with a survey to do a major graduation later on. So we don't know what the interest would be until we get to that point. To eliminate the virtual graduation now, like Mr. Benton said, I think is a mistake, because we don't know what kind of participation we would have in July.
But we could, I mean, we could go, so you're saying go ahead with a virtual, but once, once the laws are lessened, we could, we could have the, the full graduation like we would normally have?
Right. If there's enough interest.
Oh, I think there's going to be enough interest.
Well, if I can, are, are y'all ready for me? Go ahead, Ms. Cook. Okay, I have not talked to anybody either, but starting to get emotional. This is something that nobody has any way to plan for. All I know is we have to go day to day. The administrators and the principals have come with some, come up with something outside the box. My niece in Greensboro, they don't even have plans for graduation yet. They don't even have plans. We've already got the plans. We've already got everything in place. If we don't do this, there's no guarantee they're going to get any graduation. No guarantee. We can't guarantee tomorrow. We can't guarantee that after this curve is gone and people start going out, that we don't have an influx and have this happen all over again. There's no, there's no guarantee. We don't have it today. And I'm just, I'm encouraged, I'm discouraged for every child. I mean, I've got friends whose children are there. My son's going down to date to get his belongings from the funeral. They have no graduation for them. No graduation. They are going to do something in September, but there's probably going to be a handful of them that are even able to come. So my, my feeling is, as much as, as much as everyone is discouraged about it, this is something for them to have. And there are other people that are in favor of this. So there are obviously people that are voicing their concerns about, you know, not wanting to do it this way, but there are other people in favor of this. So we have to look at both sides. It's not just, you know, there are people that are okay with it. But I applaud the staff. They have gone to a lot of work, and it's taken a lot more work to do it this way than waiting and maybe not ever having a possibility of doing anything. So as disappointing and as upsetting as it is, you know, some of these kids can maybe get together, you know, with their teams, with their groups. I know it's not, I mean, they, my sister's playing a stuff like for my daughter, niece's soccer team. You know, for them to get together in small groups to celebrate each other the best that they can now, and if they're able to come back, you know, they can plan a class party on their own or something after the fact. And I mean, we have reunions every year for high schools. You know, that, there's a lot of other possibilities down the road, but I just don't see, I don't want them to miss out on getting some type of graduation by saying, "Let's wait," because our opportunity is right now, and if we don't do it now, there's no guarantee that they're going to get anything in the future. And that's the end of my field.
Well, I guess you guys save the best for last, so that'll be me. Just kidding. This COVID quarantine is getting a little to me right now. But I tend to agree with what Ms. Cook and Mr. Benton and Mr. Miller have said, and I have not spoken with anyone either, but I see this as an opportunity to have a graduation. Because as Ms. Cook says, we may not have that opportunity at any time in the future. And this way, when it's all put together and we have that video for everyone to keep and cherish and pull out on their 10th or 20th, you know, anniversary of their graduation and that kind of thing, I think that's very, very important. We would be remiss if we did not have something in place prior to knowing when things were going to clear up and how many students would be able to continue or to come back and have a full graduation. With that said, I know it's very disappointing to a lot of parents and a lot of students, but, and these students were well-spoken, they were very sincere in what they were asking for today. However, as Ms. Cook pointed out, we've received lots of information, lots of emails and phone calls from parents who support the virtual graduation. So with that in mind, I feel that we should go forward with it as planned by our staff at our district office with Superintendent and his group and principals, and go forward, and then we'll see what June does bring. But at this time, we have a plan, and it is a good plan. Thank you all for having worked on it.
All right, Madam Chair. And it's not that I disagree with the virtual. I, I think that is a, a good thing, and they've worked hard on that. All I'm asking is if in June, July, August, whenever this, this does, we get back to some kind of normalcy, can we have a graduation ceremony for these kids, the ones that can attend at each school? That's all I'm asking.
Okay, Dr. Oakes, how do you and your staff feel about that?
If you remember when the, when I put out the video to the, to the community, one of the things that I spoke about was being able to have some type of graduation when we're able to gather. I have no problem doing a full graduation when we can. I don't think the high school principals would have any issue with that as well. So what I would recommend is that we, we wait and see as to when we'll be able to gather in a, in large groups again, and if we're, if their interest is there, and Mr. Miller, and I do believe it said, believe that the interest would be there as well. We then use our, our venues, as we had attempted to do, whether it's UNCW, whether it's Odell, whether it's football fields, and provide our students and the community with a full-out graduation.
I'm good with that. That's exactly, that's all I'm asking for, Madam Chair, is I want these kids to be able to have a full graduation, no matter if it's next winter or whenever. Whenever it loosens up to where we can gather, we need to have a full graduation for these kids.
Well, I certainly understand that, and I believe the remainder of the board does as well. So our plan at this time is to go with the virtual, and then when things open back up, we will go forward with a full graduation as normal per se.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we need to make that a motion?
Um...
I think it's Chair's decision.
Okay, all right. I'm asking an attorney. Okay, we're good.
Okay, all right. Are there any other comments before we move forward? At this time, I would entertain a motion for close session.
Make a motion for close session.
Okay. Ms. Cook and Mr. Benton have motioned in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. We will meet back in 10 minutes for... We will meet back in 10 minutes for closed session. Thank you.